Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Ms. Bowman?
Here.
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Excused.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Here.
A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of January 3rd, 2022 is called to order. Happy New Year to everybody. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pardon me. Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board. I would entertain at this time a motion, which is given to us by Mr. Corburg, and a second, which is given to us by Ms. Como. To approve the agenda as submitted, unless there is a motion to amend, is there a motion? Hearing none, because Mr. Spivey is joining us remotely, we will have to have a roll call vote, so can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. No one is registered to speak under public speakers, so we will move on to the approval of the superintendent's consent agenda.
Vote to approve items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Are there any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda from the Board members? Hearing none, then with a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the superintendent consent agenda are approved as presented, and we will need a roll call vote for that as well.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. We'll move on to the approval of the Board consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the items on the Board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como to approve the items on the Board consent agenda as presented, unless there are items that need to be removed by the Board members. Are there any items that need to be removed? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. We will move on to the 2020-2021 financial audit report, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Jimenez. The presentation of the financial audit to the school board, I believe, is a state requirement, and I will turn it over to Ms. Spring.
All right, so tonight we have joining us John Troutman from Clifton-Larson Allen, our auditors, and he is joining us from Stevens Point, so thank you for coming down, so if you want to come up and present to the Board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thanks for the introduction. Again, my name is John Troutman. A pleasure to be in front of you again this year, talking about the financial audit for 2021, the year that we just got done auditing this past summer. With, if you're following along, I'll be really referencing pages out of the actual financial reports, so the actual main audit document. If you have it in paper, it's the bound document. If not, it's the larger of the two documents. That's really where your audited financial statements is in, so the majority of the book is the financial statements, the footnotes, and then the supplemental information of that. The very beginning of that document is our audit opinion from CLA. So that's really what you're getting from an external audit, is that audit opinion, the first three pages. And that audit opinion for 2021 was essentially a clean opinion, unmodified opinion is the technical term. So your internal controls that you build and you have present throughout the entire year for your financial system, all the financial ins and financial outs and all the journal entries and everything are designed to really achieve an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. That's your goal for an external audit. So that's a great thing. That's a great thing to start with. That's what you expect to get every year from a financial audit itself. But again, that's always good news, knowing that things are working correctly as far as your internal controls. With that, just kind of the next section of the financial reports called the Management Discussion and Analysis. M-D-N-A is the short acronym for that. And I just want to point out, I won't go through that in detail, because that's a document from the district that really gets inserted in here, in between the opinion and the financial statement. Highly recommend you look at that and any constituents you have, point them out, that section, because what that is, is a plain English language kind of summary of the year in nine, 10 pages. So again, goes through some graphs, goes through some terminology as far as what changed and things like that, all written by the district. So highly, highly valuable information there, of putting some of this more complicated financial statements into perspective. With that, I'm going to turn to a couple pages beyond that, so the actual statement and deposition starts on page 11, but I'm going to skip that and go to page 13. And that's intentional. Page 13 is the balance sheet. It really, really goes and eliminates the government-wide section. The first three statements are the government-wide section, pulling the entire district together, and they're very valuable statements, but these statements here, starting on page 13, are how you budget. So I always want to point in just in a short presentation form, these, these financial statements. Again, all of that flows into the other three, so I certainly can go through those if you need to. But page 13 lists your balance sheet, so it is a point in time, June 30th, 2021, as of that day, at the end of business. These are your assets and liabilities, so assets of the district in the general fund and other governmental funds. The first two columns there, $36,719,000 in the general fund. Other governmental funds has assets of $7,608,000. All the other governmental funds is an aggregate. That's a subtotal that is basically detailed in the back of the book. So if you want to know all the funds that make up that, those are all your non-major funds. General funds, your only major fund. Dropping down, assets. Next, you have liabilities. These are incurred liabilities that you will end up spending in the next fiscal year that we're in right now. So you have things like accounts payable, accrued, and other current liabilities, due to other governments, things like that. $9,302,000 total liabilities for the general fund, $441,000 for other governmental funds aggregate. Then you're left with assets minus liabilities. Well, as of a point in time, you're left with a number that's called fund balance. The fund balance is what carries over into the fiscal year we're in right now. So another way to look at that is a reserve. It's the reserve you ended with and started this fiscal year in that we're in right now. You can see there is five components of that fund balance in the general fund, and that's a hierarchy, from most restrictive all the way down to least restrictive. So that's another way to kind of picture that or visualize that. Starting at the top, non-spendable, $50,000. Well, non-spendable by definition, you don't have it. So it's part of your $27 million fund balance for the general fund, for the district, but you don't have it yet. You anticipate you will get it at some point in time, but until then, it's non-spendable. Restricted, $40,753,000. You have that available to you. It's in your cash. It's in your reserves, but you cannot spend it as a district unless it's for a particular purpose that's set from an outside party. So those are legal grant-type agreements that restrict that money. Kind of draw a imaginary line underneath that. Everything below that, committed, assigned, and unassigned, is available to the district. Committed and assigned are very similar. They're earmarked funds. You've set aside different reasons to use this money for. Some of those could be grants as well, but it's district-driven. $2,780,000 in committed. Assigned is very, very similar in concept, but it's a little less restrictive. So you can assign and unassign without formal resolutions. You have additional $864,000. If you take $27,416,000 minus all of those four that I went through, you're left with the unassigned fund balance. That is the, really the un-earmarked reserve that you're carrying over, $23,681,354,000. So that's really a number that you want to take a look at each year, take a look at all the numbers, but that's one in particular to focus on, because that applied into your expenditures is a way to get a percentage of expenditures that you have in reserve. Now, why is that important to convert a dollar amount, $23,681,000, into a percentage? Because numbers are relative, obviously. To compare yourself to an equal large district, to a small district, to municipality, to other municipalities and other districts across the country, well, the dollar amount, $23 million, is relevant to this district. If you convert it to a percentage, it shows you how much you have in reserve, really, if no revenue were to come in. So two, two and a half months is considered enough reserve. You're at about 22% of your expenditures. 20 to 25 is the recommended range. So you're right within that recommended range. You're exactly where you need to be to have an adequate reserve in case something unforeseen happens. And that's really what a reserve is, is to have that to fall back on in case something happens, so. So that's good. From a financial standpoint, very good fund balance to be targeting in that range. Additional fund balance for other governmental funds, an additional $7,67,000, and you can see the three categories there. Return to page 15. There's a reconciliation on page 14, which ties these statements back to those government-wide. But I'll focus and kind of end the financial part of this on page 15. Well, that's the income statement, so the same data set, same fund balance we just talked about, but it shows the entire year, July 1, all the way to June 30th, 21. And this is the full year, all the revenues, all the expenditures, by function of the district. And these don't change from year to year, so, and they're the same for all school districts, for the most part, across the country and the state. So you see things like property taxes being, and state and federal grants being your primary revenues. Well, that's what you would expect when you looked at an income statement of a school district, a public school district. $99,156,000 total revenues coming in for the year. Expenditures, of course, those are all of your functions, instruction, support services, and then the subcategories underneath each of those. And then you have debt service, community service, and then non-program rounding out all the expenditures. So $106,200,000 total expenditures, so in excess of revenues under expenditures of $7,43,000. Well, how is that funded? How is that deficit funded? Below the line, you have some, some other financing sources. In this case, a capital lease was issued to, to basically fund some of the expenditures that are up on the top, $6,310,000. So your net change in fund balance was a million twelve, a reduction of $1,012,000. So your fund balance went from $28,428,000 to $27,416,000. So you can see how that change went for the entire year based on your income statement. Other governmental funds, again, all those aggregates, you can see total revenues, $12,917,000 additional, compared to expenses, $12,800,000. So in addition, on addition or expenditures, I'm sorry, revenues over expenditures of $831,000. And then you had some other not financing sources, which was long-term debt issued, and then some payment of that long-term debt for refunding, which kind of washed out, and then a premium. So a net effect of a reduction of $352,000 of all the financing sources as that refinancing debt transaction. Total net change of fund balance, $484,000. That's where your $7,167,000 came from in that aggregate. Page 17, I'll just kind of make, 17 and 18, a quick note here. There's a little bit of a change here from previous years in terminology, so you can see this is where your pupil activity funds, your OPEP trust fund, your Poly Benefit Trust Fund is accounted for and reported on. And you can see that, that now there's a new category called custodial fund, pupil activity funds, no longer agency funds. So that's a change. That's a change on a national level, on an accounting standard level. So all school districts in Wisconsin, of course, we're following that. And essentially what that is, is most of the, most of the student activity funds under the old guidance, the old standards, became Fund 21, because they were, I think last year or the year before, I was talking about that, where, where the district still has control, even though it's student money, and the district still has control over the decisions. So that's, that's when, and all districts were with you on that. So most, most of that money went out of the custodial. Sometimes districts reported no custodial money. You kept some in there, a small, small amount, $14,230,000. That's very common to do that, just because there's a couple that qualified. Again, that's the major change there. That rounds out the financial information. I just have a few closing comments on some stuff coming up, but I wanted to pause there to make sure there's no questions in any of the financial footnotes. Obviously, there's 100-plus pages we can go through, so certainly open up to questions before I close out with the looking ahead. Questions? Okay. With that, I mean, again, the, the one GASB that's coming up, and I talked about it in the past, because it's been coming up for, for quite a few years, and COVID has kind of delayed, and they've kind of kicked the can as far as the implementation guidance. It is basically for years, beginning after June 15, 2021. So it is this fiscal year we're in right now, '21, '22, that this GASB is, is effective. And that's GASB 87. It's related to leases. And you may remember a conversation we had in the past about that. Well, we've got a little more information. I won't go through the whole thing again, but essentially what it's doing is it's taking the lease guidance we used to have for the last 20 years and basically redefining it and making it into one pretty much universal lease guidance. So the same rules are going to apply to you as some of the private sector clients. So that's a good thing where they're getting on the same page. What it means to, to school districts, especially your district, is you have to gather all the information as far as what you have out there for leases. It's leases that you finance for equipment, so things like you normally would have recorded as a lease already, like your iPads that you lease and things like that, that's actually equipment that you have a multi-year agreement. That's really not going to change too much. There's a little bit of complexity as far as implementation, but not a big deal. Where it changes are they, they redefine what a lease is. So in other words, what it used to be was you had to have a piece of equipment. You had to have a physical piece of equipment that you owned as a district, and you were financing it over a lease. Well, now they're saying you don't even have to own the equipment, so embedded leases are the official term. So coffee machines, vending machines, when you have a service come in, you don't even own it. If it breaks, they come and give you another one. That benefit that you get from that piece of equipment is considered an asset, and it's considered a lease. That's a huge difference, and kind of slipped under the radar. We didn't expect that to be a big deal. Now, in practice, is that going to be a big deal in a district? Probably not. You don't probably have too many of those that are material, but some larger organizations, bigger, you know, big state organizations, things like that, they could have material things that fall into that category. The municipal side of things are a lot more complicated. So your counties and your cities, they have a lot of leases, like hanger, tower rental, where you have to think is, are you leasing anything that would fall into that embedded lease? And then there's another side of this that previously there were no rules, and that is when you lease to someone else and you receive money. And again, these are all multi-year leases, not month-to-month. That doesn't count. That's not a lease. It's multi-year. So if you lease a building on a three-year term, based on, on, you know, that you can use the classroom or building or parking lot or whatever it happens to be, and you get money from multi-year, that's a lease, revenue. And now there's a brand-new footnote that's going to show up in your, in your financial statements next year, present value calculation, things that school districts never had to do before. So there's a little bit of complication there. The main work isn't that. That's pretty straightforward. Once you get everything, it's going to be doing the inventory of all the leases that are out there, making sure that on a central point, business office, they have all the information district-wide. And the larger the district, the harder it is, because there's a lot of stuff out there to know. Got some time. Audit's not till next summer, but this summer, but again, let's get started early. We're working with Patty and needed to do that, you know, and if you need any assistance, of course, that's what we're here for. Other than that, the only final comment I have is there's a lot of federal money that districts and entities are receiving. I don't need to tell you that. You know that. Simply be very much on your toes as far as internal controls over that money. I know a lot of that money is coming in an unusual fashion and in a more quick fashion, like all of a sudden you're just getting it, and, and there's different rules and things like that. Absolutely come back and make sure that as a district, you're slowing down and saying, okay, are we covering ourselves like we always do in internal control, especially with federal grants? So making sure you have checks and balances, approvals, things like that. Again, something you're doing, just make absolutely sure that because of the unusual nature of this federal money that's coming, and maybe money that's coming this next year that I don't even know about sitting here, that you're, you're taking the time to do that, because we are seeing a huge uptick in findings as far as just internal control issues at clients who've never had an issue and don't have an issue, but because the money was unusual, they changed their procedures and they got a finding. So again, just be cautious there. That's kind of my public service announcement there to make sure that that's coming. If you have any questions, like if you got money two months from now that's federal, you're not sure, ask us. There's nothing wrong with calling the auditor and saying, hey, are we doing this right? What should we do? And we'll help you, because it's before the audit. It's before you're actually doing it. That's great. That's, that's what it's about, so. Other than that, any other overall questions? I'd be happy to talk about anything else related to the audit.
Questions from the Board? I don't know if this is a question for the Board, maybe for you, Ms. Spring. The 22%, 20 to 25%, is that a district decision that we stay within that percentage range?
Actually, our policy said between 15 and 20%.
Okay.
So we have exceeded that.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's the only questions we had, so thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2021 financial audit report as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como to accept the 2020-2021 financial audit report as presented, we will have a roll call vote.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey? Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. We will move on to our next item, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards 2022 Proposed Resolutions.
I made the motion to give the WASBE delegate Brad Corburg or their designee the authority to use their discretion when voting on behalf of the School District of La Crosse at the WASBE Delegate Assembly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who is that? Ms. Leahy? Thank you. All right, moved by Ms. Como and seconded by Ms. Leahy to give the WASBE delegate, Mr. Corburg or their designee, the authority to use their discretion when voting on behalf of the School District of La Crosse at the WASBE Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion on this?
I was just going to say that. I mean, I've read them, and I'm guessing a lot of you have too. And if you have any, any questions or concerns, let me know, or Dawn serves on well, but I think we are in support of all of them. I think the national ones are probably a good move to have, not just limiting WASBE's take on one's particular association, but to look at different national, you know, groups that could help WASBE achieve its goals. So I'm thinking all of them will be positive on our end, but if anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board members? I would agree with Mr. Corburg that when I read the proposed resolutions, they seemed pretty straightforward, and I didn't see any concerns with them. So thank you very much for you and Ms. Como to represent us there. I appreciate it.
I will be representing CSA 4.
Well, you're still going.
To keep the line, since I made the motion.
Yes, you are, you are correct. Thank you very much. If there's no other discussion, then let's go ahead with a roll call vote. So Ms. Steigerwald, please.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. We'll move on to the information portion, which is Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE 6, Financial Administration. And I will turn it over to Dr. Engel.
So we've got another monitoring report, OE 6, and Ms. Spring will lead us through that report, as she is the subject matter expert in this area.
So OE 6 fits in really well with the audit explanation that we had tonight, and I will take you through that. As far as the evidence, let's go to 6.1. And the annual audit confirms that all employees were paid accurately and in a timely manner in accordance with the terms of their approved rate of pay. So the auditors randomly pick our employees. They could be under any employee category, and they trace that employee's rate of pay through a payroll process. So if it's a contracted person, it'll be the contract amount to make sure that they were paid exactly as they should. So as evidence, I put down the representation letter, page 3, number 6, related party relationships and transactions, including but not limited to revenues, expenditures, expenses, loans, transfers, leasing arrangement, and guarantees, and amounts receivable from or payable to related parties have been appropriately accounted for and disclosed in accordance with the requirements of U.S. GAAP. So that is the government accounting standards. So, and then also the auditor's governance communication noted no transactions entered into by the district during the year for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Indicator, indicator 2, internal reviews of payroll liability payments. So the statement showing that the year-end payroll liabilities at the end of the year, so that's like your FICA, your Wisconsin state tax, garnishments, and accrued payrolls are all noted as liabilities at the end of the year and are reported to the auditor as they check those out. Indicator 3, the annual audit for 2021 did not identify any improper invoice payments. So page 80 of the auditor report on internal control and compliance, the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance or other matters that are required to be reported under government auditing standards. Number 4, internal reviews of long-term debt obligation payments. Number four, internal reviews of long-term debt obligation payments and corresponding payment due dates confirm that a hundred percent of long-term debt obligations are paid within the required timelines. So attached are the audited financial pages related to debt and the DPI debt payment amortization schedules for debt by categories, the state trust fund, bonds, and capital leases. Uh, number five, the annual audit finds that that regarding processing and payment of payroll and other debts in the district are sufficient. So page eighty is uh, is attached, the results of our test disclose no instances of non-compliance. So down to OE six point two, purchases that do not have to be competitively bid are priced shopped and valued compared by the purchasing agent. So attached is a statement of the procedure that we follow for any uh, payments of goods or services, and we have a lot of areas of checks and balances in this uh, district because we have people who can do that. And uh, DeVita is uh, she's, as our supervisor of finance scrutinizes just about every bill, but especially those that are five thousand dollars or more. So OE six point three, the annual audit testing of district purchasing procedures, policies, provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and agreements do not indicate any conflict of interest issues. So we again, uh, attach the auditor's report on internal controls, page eighty, the administrative policy regarding ethics and conflict of interest, and then our statement that is attached. So OE six point four, ninety-five percent of competitively bid purchases of supplies, materials, or equipment in the amount of hundred thousand dollars or more are awarded to the most reasonable and responsible bid. So as um, we have attached there, of course, our administrative policy for methods of procurement, um, and then also the statement. So um, we have construction projects exceeding a hundred thousand dollars are always going to be put out to competitive bids, and that's when Mr. Lavina comes in and tells you what the results of those bids are. And then um, purchases over a hundred thousand a year to any one vendor in part or total um, are approved by myself. Um, and usually they're based on some kind of contract or agreement that we have, and that like transportation contract would be a good example of that. So we had uh, two bid projects this year that exceeded a hundred thousand dollars, and that was the remodeling of Hamilton and also the um, AC to the central uh, Sutton gym. And so this is regardless if those funds are donated for those projects or if we're using district funds. We go through that bidding process for those uh, construction projects. So OE six point five, uh, an annual audit is completed by the board of, um, Board of Education, selected independent financial audit firm. So of course, that's attached, and that's just what Mr. Troutman went through with you. And then um, the next one is the annual audit did not report any difficulties or lack of cooperation from district staff. So they actually have a section in the governance communication letter that, with the heading, difficulties encountered in performing the audit, and we have uh, they encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management in performing and completing their audit, and I attribute that to DeVita and her, our staff in the business office. So um, OE six point six, the annual report from DPI's aid register was tied out to the district's revenue accounts. So attached is the DPI records for twenty-twenty-one for La Crosse. Our general ledger amounts have to agree to the uh, what is on record with the DPI before we can submit our annual report. Uh, number two, all funds due from the state and federal government are tracked and collected throughout the year. So I did have one error here that I do have to remove, that first statement that is not highlighted, that I left on there from last year and I, I meant to remove it. So I will remove that one um, for the final report. But the twenty-twenty-one schedule of federal and state awards um, is attached, and the independent auditor report on compliance for each major federal and state program. So those are both attached. The next one, OE point, uh, six point seven, independent auditor's report opinion on page two supports that Clifton, Larson, Allen confirmed that the district accounting policies conform to generally accepted accounting principles. And so if you look at their opinion of the financial statements, they present fairly in all material respects uh, for the information for the district uh, for the period ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Um, it ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Uh, indicator number two, the district's PI fifteen oh five annual report was submitted successfully to the DPI on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So the actual DPI annual report is attached. The twenty-twenty-one DPI certification acceptance is also attached, and that is the certification page signed by Dr. Engel, Ms. Como, and myself, and the date of submission. Indicator number three, um, the twenty-twenty-one PI fifteen oh six AC was submitted and accepted by DPI on September thirteenth. So this is actually the auditor's report of aid certification. It must meet, uh, match our aid certification report, and so that is attached. Uh, six point eight, indicator one, within six months of the close of the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year, a complete set of financial statements audited by CLA, a licensed certified public accounting firm, was submitted and accepted by DPI on December fourteenth. So what you have received today um, um, in paper and online is what was submitted to DPI, and that confirmation from DPI is um, attached. Then the in- indicator two, the statements in report are published in print, so yeah, it was your printed copy. Now you are uh, certainly uh, available to just keep this, but if you do not want to keep it, you can just leave it on the table, and we will have it always available for you to refer to if you want to refer to a paper copy. So um, and then of course, the statement um, that after tonight's meeting, the audited financials are posted on our district's website. Uh, OE six point nine, expenditures for the general fund for twenty-twenty-one did not exceed the appropriation amount approved in the final budget amendment. So these were the two uh, budget amendment that we always bring to the board, usually in June. So this is proof that we brought those amendments to the board and you approved them in June of tw- of twenty-twenty-one. And then of course, the fund balance designations, which you approved in August of twenty-twenty-one. Indicator two, there is no violation of state law or notification of a violation in connected connection with expenditures. So that is the representation letter, page five, number twenty-five, expenses have been appropriately classified in or allocated to functions and programs in the statement of activities, and allocations have been made on a reasonable basis. OE six point ten, the audit report finds no evidence of short or long-term financial obligations or debts, except those that have been approved by the board. So attached again is the twenty-twenty-one debt schedule uh, from the audited financials. And this kind of, um, you might recall, anything related to debt, we bring to the board. So whether we're refinancing, we're um, incurring new debt, uh, we're paying off debt early, or we are restructuring our debt, the board is always made aware of those, and uh, sometimes even has to sign a resolution. So the other one is the annual audit did not report any findings of obligations remaining unpaid for sixty days. So in our um, audited financials, note three, um, material obligations appropriation, appropriate appropriations lapse at year end unless authorized as a carryover by the Board of Education. The portion of fund balance representing carryover appropriations is reported as a committed or assigned fund balance in the fund uh, financial statements, and the district did not have any material violation of legal or contractual provisions for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Also, the representation letter, uh, number six, which we already stated on six point one, and then number seven, no events, including instances of non-compliance have occurred subsequent to the financial statement date and through the date of this letter, and that would require adjustments or disclosure. The financial statements are in the schedule of findings and questionable costs, just meaning that there was nothing that changed after these financial statements were finalized. Six point eleven, the annual audit did not report any findings of state law violations in connection with expenditures exceeding appropriations. Again, the governance communication letter, um, the qualitative aspects of accounting practices section, we noted no transactions entered into the district during the year for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. All significant transactions have been recognized in the financial statements in the proper period. Indicator two, there is no violation of state or uh, state law or no notification of violation in connection with expenditures exceeding appropriation determined by external auditors. And that's the representation letter, number fifteen, there are no violations or possible violations of budget ordinances, laws, and regulations, including those pertaining to adopting, approving, and amending budgets. And as, and that continues, it's quite the statement. And then six point twelve, um, evidence for no transfers to funds that exceeded the annual operating budget. So in there, we uh, put again the audited financial statements, the fund twenty-seven transfer of ten million dollars from fund ten to fund twenty-seven uh, to cover special education expenditures, and then of course, our fund seventy-three contribution uh, for our post-retirement plan. Then uh, the annual audit uh, did not report any findings of state law violations in connection with fund transfers. Again, I would refer to six point one uh, statement. Then um, indicator number one for six point one three, the financial reports have been submitted by their required due dates to the appropriate agencies. Uh, attached is the DPI status and due date report, showing that all reports have been submitted in a timely basis. Also that the audit also confirmed that the district has complied to all material respects with the compliance requirements of major federal and state programs for the year. Um, page eighty-two of uh, the federal and state program uh, compliance says, in our opinion, the district complied in all material respects with the types of compliance requirements referred to above that could have a direct and material effect on each of its major federal and state programs for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, indicator number two, the financial audit report has been submitted to DPI by the December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one deadline, and that has um, attached, of course, the auditor's due dates and when they submitted it. The audit report will be presented at the January third board meeting, which it was tonight. And then the uh, indicator three, the district did not receive any notifications of non-compliance due to late or inaccurate filings, and that is a statement attached. And then finally, uh, OE six point one four, uh, the twenty-twenty-one audit did not identify any deficiencies in internal control to be considered material weaknesses. Significant deficiencies in internal control for twenty-twenty-one were identified. So that goes with the preparation of the uh, annual financial statement, which we get every year because we um, have the auditors put together a lot of the information in our book. Uh, we of course are responsible for reviewing that and making sure it's accurate. The segregation of duties for grant reporting, and that had to do with our Esser One funds, where um, I submitted a claim and I also authorized it. And so that shows on our Wise Grants, which makes it believe that it wasn't reviewed, but actually, any of our claims that we submit, DeVita uh, reviews for accuracy. And so now going forward, we will make sure that any claims submitted by one person are authorized by another, so that it's evident to the auditors when they come. Uh, then the measurement number two, all investments have been confirmed by the auditors to be in compliance for twenty-twenty-one, and our administrative policy regarding um, investments. So that is a lot. Do you have any questions?
That'd be a lot, Ms. Spring, but it's always enjoyable to talk about finances. Any questions from the board members? I do have one, if there's no questions from the board members, if I could go back to six point four, Ms. Spring.
Okay.
And now I just need to find six point four. Uh, when I was looking at, let's see, where is it? Uh, when I was looking at um, the only indicator, indicator one, in the evidence, there's a mention of the business office acknowledges that there are several services that are not reasonably bid due to proprietary items or are only available through one vendor. Could you give an example of something that would fall under that?
Uh, utilities?
Okay.
Would be a good example, um, that we don't put out to bid, uh, because we're just charged what we're charged.
Sure.
So that would be one, or, or anything under an agreement.
Sure. Okay. That makes sense. And then you answered my other question, which was um, trying to understand the, the statements made by the auditor in six point one four, indicator one, on the significant deficiency, so I appreciate the, the explanation there.
Right. You, you know, it's significant deficiencies doesn't sound very good, but a material weakness is worse. So we had no material weaknesses.
Perfect.
And I, I would just offer up, it's an incredible amount of work that Ms. Spring puts in and Mr. DeVita Molling puts in, not only in the weeks leading up to an audit, but also during the audit, and then really they're preparing for an audit every day of the year by making sure that we do things well. And we're fortunate to have audits come back clean like this with a quick, easy presentation. This does not happen in every school district, and so uh, thankful for the business office and all that they do to ensure that we're on a good financial standing. Uh, it's not always fun having to do the right thing financially, but it means that we get to have a meeting like this where we can be thankful that we're in a good financial position as we move forward.
Personally, as somebody who's going to be going through this for a national organization as treasurer, thank you for the hard work you all do every day to make this an easy process, because it is a very difficult process. So uh, turning it back to the board then, uh, are there any concerns with the monitoring report as it's presented? Uh, it seems pretty straightforward to me, but any concerns from the board members? Hearing none, then we will move on to our announcements, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Bowman.
So, um, like the day after our last meeting, the executive director was announced, which was exciting, but I wish those dates would line up a little better so we don't have to wait to announce that um, a new executive director has been hired, Nell Saunders Scott. Um, she formerly was at The Parenting Place in, I wrote it down, her title, uh, the fund development director position. So she's, brings a lot of experience working with nonprofits and at that kind of executive level with nonprofits, and um, she also has been pretty actively involved in the district. I think she currently serves on the district-wide parent committee. Um, so her connections to La Crosse and the schools are pretty good, and I, I really think this is a big win. Um, if you see her, congratulate her and welcome her. I'm super excited to see where she takes the L. So, her connections to La Crosse and the schools are pretty good, and I really think this is a big win. If you see her, congratulate her and welcome her. Super excited to see where she takes the LPEF in the next years, so. And one more thing I'll mention again, the January 14th Grants Award Luncheon is coming up. Ms. Steigerwald sent an email about a board table reserved, so I'll put a little plug in for that, too. But that's all I have.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. I only have two announcements, just to let people know that on January 11th, we will have a linkage with Spence Elementary Staff at 2:55 in the LMC. So, board members, please let Ms. Steigerwald know if you are available to attend the Spence Elementary linkage. We would appreciate that. And of course, January 18th through the 21st is the Wisconsin State Education Convention in Milwaukee. And so, if you have an opportunity to attend, that would be also a very good opportunity regarding the state education convention. It's always a great time and a good learning experience for new board members. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
Thank you. The only announcement I have is January 18th through 21 is National School Crossing Guard Week. They provide an invaluable service in ensuring our kids get safe to school, and on mornings like this morning, it's a particularly hazardous job with cold weather and rambunctious kids coming off a holiday break. So, thankful for all that they do and appreciate the safety they provide our students.
All right. So, then let us move on to agenda planning.
I make a motion to approve the January 24, 2022 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
All right. So, with a motion by Ms. Como and a second by Mr. Spivey, we will approve the January 24, 2022 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections, and we will have a roll call vote. Ms. Steigerwald?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Baumann?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. And we'll move on to the board debriefing. Dr. Cooper Stole is not with us today, but I would just open it up for the board members and maybe just a comment of how things went and any comments that the board members might have. I mean, again, short meetings are always hard, even though this is 45 minutes, and a very detailed report on finances and a great report from the auditor, which is always good news. Any feedback or comments from the board? Sounds good. Well, then, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and Happy New Year again.